This conference will now be recorded.
If somebody's got some feedback, okay. All right. Okay. Welcome, everyone, this afternoon for our City Council work session, September 21st. I'll call the meeting to order and I gotta see which staff is there. Is it Mary for roll call or? Is it Holly? No, Gabe. Yeah, Gabe, go ahead.
Counselors Coburn. Here. Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
All counselors present, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. And then next on the agenda is business from the public. And we did have somebody that was wanting to speak. And I am not seeing them on. And with respect to our online sign where logging in might be a little bit different, difficult. We maybe, maybe I'll go ahead and if they do pop on later after our first agenda item, I can let them speak. But it was Steph Newton was supposed to unless Gabe or Jorge, are you seeing her on? Because now I've just lost.
Stephanie's there.
Oh, she is there. Okay, all right. Didn't see. Okay, Stephanie, would you like to take the floor and then make sure you state your name and furnish your address, please?
Yes, my name is Stephanie Newton. My address is 839 Fifth Avenue Southwest. Stop by sometime for the best damn cookies you'll have in Albany. So Dick can attest to this. I pawned off.
Can you hang on for just a sec? So could we get the shared screen dropped so we can be able to see the videos? I, I can't see her on video here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph. Go ahead, Steph.
Oh, so I was just saying, you know, stop by anytime. So I wanted to stop by. So I'm the Chair of the HRC. We've had several members resign. I wanted to touch base with all y'all. I know that Bessie, in the email, you said you were really concerned and wanted to discuss. And so I wanted to make sure I made myself available. I had touched base with Jorge and he said that, so our quorum is four folks, two of to attend. And so we don't have quorum for our meeting tomorrow. I know that some people have applied for one of the three open positions. We have Chris Equinois, I believe Counselor Sykes, that's your position, your seat, and then Bessie and Rich. I, I believe that your seats also are open. So I wanted to touch base with everyone. And, you know, we want to continue doing good work. We want to move forward. And I know there's been some, there was a big article about the HRC. And so wanted to touch base with everyone and see where everything's at.
Okay. Was there any question? Was there any question? Okay. Getting some feedback here. Some feedback here. Are you, anybody else getting feedback? But I'm hearing. Anybody else getting feedback? But I'm hearing.
I'm hearing you twice and you're real garbage.
Same here. Same here.
If everyone who is.
So am I speaking then? Okay. Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a problem. Anytime you get a couple of members resigning and then other people writing letters, you know, expressing their concerns, particularly for a committee that's human relations. I think it's the tip of the iceberg. And I'm not sure how to proceed. It, it might be that we need to tear things down and build them back up again. But certainly a worthy discussion. There's value to having the, the commission or a group that's meeting to discuss community relations possibly. But good, good time for a discussion.
Anything else? Yeah, Rich?
Yes. Well, if you look at the membership of HRC, there are three people who are not there. Then there's going to be one that's going to be campaigning and HRC is not going to be meeting if, if we don't have people who, who want to put people on board. I know there are some folks who I'm not going to put anybody on board. It's broken. Anytime you have the perception by about half of the committee that they aren't listened to. And then you look at the, at the base of the committee, what it's supposed to be doing, what it was supposed to be doing when it was new. I mean, it was, this is a committee that was supposed to bring people together and talk about the things they have in common. And what it's turned into is a bitch session. Everybody who has a problem with, oh gee, I don't like the way that guy is looking at me or whatever, is now out there saying, oh gee, those other people are awful. And it's not just this group that has that problem. I mean, all you have to do is go on any, any media and see that same thing. But the bottom line, there's going to be one person who is out campaigning, is not going to attend any meetings. And I know at least two more that are not going to be put in place. So there will be, if the third that I've heard is not going to send anybody to that commission for all intents and purposes until the end of the year, it's dead. And I think that's what needs to happen. I don't, I think Bill is right that we need to have a, I don't know who does it. What is it that the council wants out of this commission? It was completely broken. And we tried to put some balance on it. And it seems that the balance, oh, well, gee, they don't believe the way we believe. So we want to see them gone. That's unacceptable. So, yeah, call it whatever it is, call it something else. I mean, I mean, a couple of years ago, Alex and I, when he was, when he first came on, he and I went to have some lunch. And I learned about, from Alex, that he and I had a whole lot of things in common. He and I are both colored. I don't know if he's blue and I'm gold or if I'm blue and he's gold, but Navy colors is what we are. And we have a history there. There is a longstanding tradition of breaking bread with people. And when that happens, you deal with people based on your common backgrounds or your common history. You don't deal with them because they're some color. I've also found out that, that he and I have another thing in common, that we have had at one point or another in our life, walking down the street with a spouse that doesn't look like us and have people sneer. I mean, that's why HRC was put together to begin with, is to come up with commonality, not people pointing the finger at someone else saying, hey, they're bad. We have all kinds of, we have the police, we have, we have the EEOC, et cetera, et cetera, if there is a problem. And here recently, there's been a problem and it went to the police and the police are handling it. It says specifically in, in the bylaws of, of the founding document of HRC that they are not there for that. But it keeps coming back. So I'd be interested to hear what Alex has to say or Mike or et cetera, et cetera.
Anyone else? Alex?
Good night. Oh.
Alex on.
Oh, so I agree with Rich. Rich and I've had several conversations. We disagree on some things, we agree on others. And he's Navy blue and I'm Navy gold because, you know, gold is more expensive. And I, I, he's right. My wife is not black. And I've had issues, people in stores looking at us and people looking at her differently. Why, my understanding when I got elected to council was that the HRC was to bring people together and, 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 you know, a community relations organization that would bring people together, connect people. And since I've been on council, you know, a former member of HRC attacked me for not bringing up the fact, the fact that I'm black and I ran for city council. I mean, he attacked me just after the election. And so I think there's some ways, some validity to what Counselor Coburn and what Counselor Callum said, is it, is, are they accomplishing their mission? Are they actually doing what they're assigned to do or committed to do? I'd like to know that. You know, I read, I read the commission documents online and, you know, looking back over the last six or seven months, you know, it's, it's something's wrong. It really is. And people can have differences of opinion, but they can also agree or disagree, but work together. And that's what the city council does. And I'm hoping that we'll figure out what's going forward with them, with that group, that committee, because we've all assigned people to that committee. And Mike, my person I assigned, Scott Wally, he and I have talked extensively about his concerns and he wrote a letter to us about it. Is it time to revisit that? That's a good question for the council.
Bessie?
Yeah, I agree with all three of you. I believe it is, there is something broken. I don't think it's going down the path that we thought it was going to be. I'm wondering, and we'll have to discuss this, but I'm wondering if it would be more of a, like a recruiting committee to get more people of different colors, cultures or whatever involved in the city, you know, in the city process. You know, we've got committees, we've got council, we've got everything. So I too, I would like to relook this because anytime a rational person says, well, I, this is what I think, and I was told that I was wrong because that's what I think. We've got a problem. And so I think we just need to relook it. Thank you.
Mike?
Well, I agree with what's going on with what Rich and, and Alex said, except for they have to remember the Navy is the Uber for Marines. So with that being said, when I first was elected to the city council, I was asked to appoint some people in different, it was my time to appoint some people. And after going through the list of stuff, I appointed somebody. And the very next day I got told, no uncertain terms, that because I didn't appoint so-and-so, I was wrong. And my intent was to have a different voice on there, a different, a different viewpoint. And I got taken to the, to the cleaners over it by the HRC committee because I didn't appoint who they thought I should appoint. And Rich was party to that discussion. And I think the HRC needs to be looked at again. I think it needs, like Rich said, shut down till the end of the year. Because it's supposed to be different people having different viewpoints and getting along and try to come to middle ground. And from what I've seen and what I've heard, that's not happening. So I would have to agree with everybody else at this point.
Okay, Dick?
Well, I hate to say anything because I know you'll all disagree with me. But I'd like to hear what the, do I, can I call her chairman or do you need to call her chairwoman or chairgirl? She's less than half as old as I am. I'd like to hear what she has to say. I'd like to know how long she's been chairman. And I think we need to give the committee a chance to come to terms and do some serious productive discussion. That's my comment. Stephanie, how long have you been chairman?
Yes, Steph?
Just a year. We had a huge turnover. I remember Javier, he resigned and Janice Tafen and Kim, we had actually a huge overturn, well, turnover at the end of 2019. But a lot of folks resigned out of frustration as well. But it was, that actually was stemmed directly towards the experience working with the council during the kind of more contentious meeting. But, um, so I have a few comments. I've been scribbling down while you guys have been speaking. So the attendance issue with someone not being able to come because they're campaigning. So this person had, this member of our commission has been campaigning for a while. But prior to that, Daniel Ropp, one of our commission members who recently resigned, he had only actually attended four out of the last meetings he's supposed to have attended is since he was appointed. And it's, he was appointed beginning of 2019. So I believe, doing the math, that's about a 23% attendance rate. So we already had issues with attendance, with folks coming. We've already had, had to cancel meetings because of quorum. So I'll just, I think that we need to have people, we need to, one, this is not just for HRC, but I think for all commissions, we need to revisit the attendance requirement? I want to say, like, if that, I think it is, if you can only have two unexcused meetings in a row and then you're removed. But if you have excused meetings, you're not removed. So if you like, stay in advance, you're unable to attend. So I'm just going to say, like, to keep commissions functioning and people, I mean, ensuring we have quorum moving forward with all commissions, revisiting the attendance policy. I guess is that the right word for it? So I want to, so the recruiting committee, Bessie, I wanted to address that. So I, I, I agree. So prior to the recent amount of people that have tried, that have recently applied, which I reached out to folks with different backgrounds that have different economic levels, different marriage backgrounds, different racial backgrounds, different language backgrounds. And prior to actually these folks applying, when there was an open seat, I had actually encouraged one of my neighbors in my, my community, my daughter was in the same preschool as, as her son. Her second language is English. She, her first language is Korean, had just became a United States citizen, young mother of two kids, moved to Albany, had experienced some interesting issues. And she had applied and she was not appointed, but other folks were appointed for, I guess, I, I'm not sure of the exact motives, but I think that she would have been a valuable voice because there are folks in our community that, you know, English isn't their first language and what are, what are barriers that they face. Or, and I would like to also, you know, I know that maybe I'm showing my hand, but I'm, I'm a young parent. I think that there needs to be more families involved in our commissions, people that know what it's like to raise kids here in Albany. I definitely see things through a different lens than maybe someone that has, you know, kids that are out of the household. I also wanted to ask a question. You know, what, what contention are you guys referencing? Because I, I'm not sure, like, thinking back on all of our meetings, I'm not sure. I feel like, so I've gotten together with the majority of our, of everyone outside of our commission just like to get coffee or to chat. I'm, I don't believe, I, there's, I, how do I put this without sounding, sounding super cheesy? I don't have, like, enemies or people I do not like. Like, Rich, you and I have gotten coffee several times. You know, we can chat. You know, like, I, I believe in working across the aisle and working together as a team to accomplish our goals. And we've done, we, we've tried to, with, with, with the HRC, we've, we've put a new focus on actually getting to know more of the resources here in the city of Albany. And so I'm, I'm personally confused when I hear that you guys feel that there's contention or there's, we aren't getting along at meetings because you can listen to the meetings, you know, out, online and, and outside of this news article that came out. I don't understand how folks feel like they aren't being listened to or they aren't, because that hasn't been brought up. And I've made it, one moment, Rich, I've made it very clear that, you know, we, we all, like, we, we talk together. You know, it's not like a, I'm right, you're wrong, boo, like, nanana, boo boo. It's, uh, it's coming together as like a team to figure out what's the best for the city of Albany. And so I'm, I'm really perplexed when I'm hearing that there's contention that we are, we're, we're putting down people, especially when not, not to, you know, as someone who likes, who takes pride in showing up for my commitments, when someone says that they feel like they aren't heard or, or whatever you, and they have only attended, you know, less than a quarter of meetings. I, I have some frustration and some hesitation giving that much clout. So just a few of my thoughts and wanted to share my perspective and wanted to see if you guys had specifics for the meetings where you guys feel that things aren't being, people aren't being heard.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
Okay, as to people not being heard, I heard that from two people who resigned. Did you read their letters? Because it's in there.
I did their letters, but I feel like they were more directly referencing the article.
Well, I spoke with both of them. One was mine and one was someone that I suggested. I also spoke with, with Joe Ray and, and got a feel from, from her about how things happen. And it was just being dismissed. She is not someone that just anybody dismisses. I mean, I'm, you know, she has a, a personality that is kind of in your face. So she doesn't have that problem, but the ideas are dismissed. Understand, that's just what brought the attention. People, when you have numbers of people resign from something, that means there's a problem. And then you start looking at what it is that's going on. And you go back and look at the founding documents. The founding documents specifically exclude looking out after people's race rights and et cetera, et cetera, because we have within the system, people who are experts at that. And of course, you are, however good at it you particularly might be, but other people have actual responsibility for it. But beyond that, if you look at the people who are there, yours and Scott's both end at the end of the year. Now, if you are reappointed, then you're reappointed. But then Ray is running. If he, if he is a person who gets elected, then he has to resign. Right? So the only one that would actually be on there that is guaranteed a pathway through is Joe Ray Perkins, while she's also running. If she gets elected, she's going to be gone. That is also a point that is an opportunity. Well, wait a minute, if you're going to stop things, now's the time. So you're not, you're not having people, large numbers of people get halfway into something and, and then be told, nope, it's all over. It's the least amount of people being pushed away if, if for some reason it would turn out to be a different program. So I know that you and I, we see things sometimes the same and sometimes different. We can agree to disagree. And with the vast majority of people, I have that ability. There was a, an impression by people who have left and by others who, who felt that there was not the ability to agree to disagree. And that's just what brought it forward. That's not the entire situation. So I think what I would like to see is a group of people, whether it's the people that are around or probably, probably different people. It depends first what this body says we want it to look like. And if, if we want it to be a, a place of melting pot colors and everybody has a different perspective and, you know, true diversity, okay, great, fine, let's do that. You may or may not have the people that are there doing that.
So Rich, looking at the time, I mean, I think if we're, if there's going to be a new direction taking place on the HRC, we need to have this for a work session to kind of really go through.
Well, something.
But also there is going to probably be coming to the council an attendance policy because some of the other boards and commissions too have been up against this of not having a quorum when there's been members that haven't been, been shown. But the one person that did just resign recently, that was a move out of the community. So that was not anything that was contentious. But I, you know me, I like everything to be.
That was the first one, yeah.
In our, in our community and I don't like seeing kind of division or any divisiveness. So let's just all hope that we can be able to work through this. And, but I did attend, I did read through all the minutes of the last year and a half. I didn't see anything contentious on the, on the minutes, but of course, the minutes are just more brief. But, but if there was any, any of our members that resigned that feel their voices wasn't heard, that is not the intent of the city or anybody or the HRC. So we're just, it's, you know, we're a bit unfortunate that, that they feel that way. If it did happen, I do apologize that that happened. I think all of us can say we apologize if anybody, it was not comfortable on any of our boards or commissions. So.
What I would point out here, so, what I would point out is there are five of us that say we need to put this on hold. And I, I think, I think that's five of us saying that. Put it on hold and then, and then work on it.
Well, would you like?
Well, I guess I would move that we put it on hold. Put the HRC on hold until the end of the year. And if there's a second, we can go on.
I would agree with that.
Okay, Dick did a second. Okay, and all those, and any counselors, any questions over that motion?
I think, I would like to chime in there if you don't mind. I think while, while we, if we do this, we should also have a plan for each of the counselors to appoint somebody to a committee to look at it and reformulate or revision or re-envision what it would look like. And look at the charter and see if it's still valid or does it need improvement? Instead of us just going silent, I think we should appoint someone. Go ahead, Peter.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Alex. I just wanted to make sure that the mayor saw my hand too. I was going to propose that Jorge and me work with Stephanie to try to come up with a plan for the way ahead. The, the, you know, you're, you're on hold till the end of the year anyway, if there's not going to be further appointments to it. But you're going to have to have a discussion at some point. So it'll come back on an agenda. We'll just look at the chart, we'll look at exactly what you're talking about in terms of what the charter is and come back to you and facilitate a discussion.
Yeah, I think.
For the record, I don't think Stephanie should be on that because she's part of the current system. And she's the, we're talking about what should, what it should look like, and that is a council issue. I mean, the council determined what it's supposed to look like and, you know, if it looks close enough, and I guess Stephanie is, is Dick's appointment, I think. And, you know, I would see if he wants to put her on the new one, then he puts her on the new one. I mean, that's the that's the way the system works. I don't have any animus towards Stephanie. I just don't. Stephanie is not a council member.
So you don't like her because she's my appointment, I guess.
No, that's he didn't say that.
Would you quit that?
Actually, Stephanie and I have given each other a couple of hugs. So, you know, you should probably revisit your thought there.
The council, I really think the next step should be at an available work session, we have the bylaws to this commission in front of us and its mission, and we review it. I think that's probably the best step. And the council can look at this, the bylaws to it. It's not the charter, it's the bylaws of it. So so Peter, maybe we can get that on the schedule. Because I think that way the council can decide which avenue you want to go from there.
And send that to us, the email first. Should rather than later, and Bill's looking.
Right, Bill. Bill.
I think that's a good process, Sharon. It's come up before that that all these people serve at the pleasure of the council. So I think the responsibility does fall on the council. And that's a good place to start.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. Okay. And next, and that was it on business from the public. Let me double check here. Okay, and Jonathan, sorry, we're a little behind schedule for the building division update. For removing it off the screen, I'm sorry, I kind of had to interrupt you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman. Jonathan Balcema, Building Official Manager for the Community Developments Building Division. I wanted to thank you guys for having us today, just so we could give you an update on our program and what we've been doing so far and some future enhancements that we're looking at. And I have a couple of stats to show you how our programs weathered the COVID situation. So you guys can kind of have an idea how the building community has been responding most. So before we get started, just a quick reminder, kind of how our program was set up. So basically, we run a statewide program that we assume the city assumed from Building Codes Division. And part of what we do is respond to the state building codes and the various rules and laws that go around that. Locally, we've adopted Title 18 to try to administer the elements that we have authority over. And generally, that's related to our fees, our appeals processes, our dangerous building, those sorts of administrative things. That's how we have our demolition permit, those sorts of things. So we try to complement the state program with local requirements as possible through Title 18. So just as a quick refresher, some of the stuff that we have implemented over the past, and some of this will show that it was very helpful into the COVID era, because we stayed pretty busy this time around. So one thing that was implemented back in 1819 was increased to our commercial plumbing inspection program. Previously, the building division only offered commercial plumbing inspection program plumbing inspections on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday basis. We heard from customers that they would prefer it five days a week, especially with the new apartment buildings that we were having come on. So we increased the amount of services that we provided by having it five days a week. We streamlined our inspection request types as we were moving to our online system that we'll talk about just for a second later. We were looking at the amount of requests that customers would have to make for given inspections. And we tried to reduce those numbers down. Previous systems were configured to, you know, have numerous inspections where one would work. So one of the great examples was the foundation inspections where literally to request a foundation inspection, you actually requested four separate sub inspections. So we streamlined it. So now people only ask for one single inspection. And then we move to our online inspection request system and do email confirmations. This way, people actually get an email once they've scheduled online. Both the applicant and the requestor gets an email confirmation that there are on the books for the following day. So that way they can plan around that. One of the things that we do is we partner with Albany Fire. And one of the things that customers complained about to a point was basically they'd do a request, we'd have to reach out to fire, reach out to the customer, try to figure out a mutual time that would work for joint inspection. So working with Albany Fire, we set up a predetermined schedule. So that way, the customers, when they schedule their inspections, know right away what their time is for the inspection, what day of the week. That way, there was less back and forth and less delay on their part. And then, you know, we streamlined the application and the checklist for our one and two families to try to make sure that, you know, customers knew what we needed to complete our plan reviews and make sure we get all the information that we need for our applications. And in fiscal year 1920, we, you guys may remember, we had talked to you about the challenges of getting a plumbing inspector. We now have a commercial plumbing inspector on staff. So we now have one that's available, not just AM or PM, as we were doing with the contract through party inspector. We now have a commercial plumbing inspector that we can deploy at any point in the day. We restructured our building inspectors and plan examiners positions. You may recall that Lynette and I came before you guys late last year. We changed that position. So it was no longer certificate based for pay, rather, it's a normal city structure for how it was put together. This will, this helped with us in retention, actually landing one of our inspectors. So hopefully, we'll see the benefit of that. We have had two new staff members. One is actually our plumbing inspector and one's a new permit tech that we have. And we now have two bilingual employees on our staff to help with our Spanish speaking customers. So we'll be able to assist out in the field and act the counter with people that English may not be their first language, which is great. We also had worked with previous permit texts. We have one that's new. So we'll be working with them to do the same thing, but to make sure the permit texts are certified, to try to make sure that our customers are better served at the counter to make sure that they know exactly what plans examiners would need, what we really need from a process wise, to make sure that we can get those permits out as soon as we possibly can. And then, one of the things that we heard quite a bit from customers is at the time, we had two email addresses, plus each permit tech used their personal email or personal city email for correspondence with our customers. So we had multiple email addresses and things would get lost, things would get misplaced. So we moved to a general customer service email address. So that way, everything gets truncated into a single inbox, and then staff works out of that. That way, we make sure the customers get prompt attention, plus the message gets carried through instead of, I thought you were handling it, those sorts of things. And then earlier this year, we came to you guys and asked for a fee reduction. And so those were the enhancements that we've taken in the past. And as we look at the stats, I have to say that staff have done a really good job of taking care of our customers during this time. Because as you can see from the August numbers, these are permits just for this calendar year, from January through August. And during the pandemic, our numbers have not really slumped in the amount of permits that we've actually taken in. It actually continues to grow statistically. This is our third highest year to date out of the last five years for actual building permits. And then our inspections themselves are doing very similar. It's actually curving up statistically, it's flat between last year and this year. So even while trying to offer the same amount of service and a reduced time to try to keep staff from being out and exposed as much as possible, we've our business has been still there. Electrical program is a little bit different than the building program in that context. We are seeing a decrease in the amount of electrical permits and equally in the electrical inspections. That's partially due. If you notice, it started to tail off in 2018. At that time, the Building Codes Division released some new rules to allow more electrical installations to use what they called their minor label program. So less electrical installations actually require a building permit. Instead, they get this minor permit and basically one out of 10 get inspected. So that's part of the reason why we're seeing a tail off is a lot more projects qualify for the minor label. So going forward, we're looking at some additional enhancements to try to one streamline our processes and two to address some concerns that we've heard from our customers. One of the first things that we're looking at doing is the far right, far left is continuing making online applications, especially during this COVID event. It became very noticeable that there were some permits that weren't online yet. So customers couldn't take advantage of those. We had to have a lot more email correspondence to make simple permits where other jurisdictions have already had those on. So we're working with IT to get those implemented with a small system update that we'll be implementing shortly. And then, one of the frustrations that we've heard from our customers is the our current electronic document review software. We utilize a third party software called Project Docs. And while it is a good software, it doesn't quite fit our business model. The current way, it requires customers to visit not only our permit tracking system, but also this third party software, which means additional software staff or customers have to get used to and try to interact with. And the company believes in their system and it's somewhat uncustomizable. So it is software that, as we were looking at needing to do an upgrade to deal with modern computer systems, we've elected to go away from it and utilize the permit tracking systems, integrated system, which will allow customers to apply in one software, upload their plans in one software, basically make pay their fees and everything all at one time to reduce the amount of interactions that they have to do and only be used to one software. So hopefully, that will help resolve some of the challenges that customers have been facing as we've been using that previous software. And then, as always, we're increasing staff capacity. So as I mentioned, we have a couple new staff members. So we'll be getting those staff members additional certifications, including our plumbing inspector. He just recently got certified for mechanical and he's currently getting his residential certification. So that way, we'll increase staff capacity within the current FDE that you guys have allocated for us. The bigger things that we're looking at are future enhancements. Those are all ones that are in the process. The first one is under bullet one. So one of the things that we're trying to do again is try to reduce basically red tape, try to make sure that we have listened to our customers in the context of the things that they have been providing to us. And one of the biggest complaints that we hear is just the amount of time a plan takes through plan review. That's a pretty typical thing for most jurisdictions. So one of the avenues that we can pursue is additional staff to deal with the increased workloads that we're seeing sustain and continue to grow, or we can look at efficiencies within the program itself. So what we're going to be moving forward with and discussing today is a kind of a two forked approach. So we'll be mainly trying to look at our current systems and try to reduce the amount of involvement in staff to try to streamline that process. The first one is what they state refers to as a master plan review program. So if you have a house designed that you use multiple times, so this would work for some of our, say, production builders, I believe, one of our local builders reuses plans over at the Mennonite Village, those sorts of repeat plans could use this type of program where basically building division staff still review a master of the plan itself. And then when you go to reuse that, we have the actual document itself. We use that as the basis for the future one. So that way, there's less plan review. We're not relooking over the exact plan pages that we've already used within the same code cycle. So this would reduce the plan review time. As you guys know, that we still have other departments that do look at our plan review. So it won't completely eliminate it, but it will reduce the amount of review time that's involved. It will increase the consistency because at that point, then we already have one set of complete documents that will be reusing over again, which then leads to reduce staff time. And when we have reduced staff time, that means we can allocate that staff member to the next project sooner to try to reduce the amount of time projects are in our queue. And then, since we're not spending as much staff time on it, this program would also qualify people for the subsequent reuses for a reduction in the plan review fees. So that way, they're actually getting a savings in addition to getting their plans out quicker. The second one that we're looking at doing is the state's currently in a pilot program. So this would be after the state gets out of the pilot program of joining on to the state's voluntary mechanical minor label program. So similar to the mandated plumbing and electrical minor label, this one would be something that the mechanical contractors would sign up through the state. We would sign on saying that it's a jurisdiction, as a jurisdiction, we would use it. And basically, when somebody has, say, a furnace swap out, instead of coming to us and get a permit every time, again, this is up to the contractor to do it, basically, they could use this other process, use a minor label, and then we would get notified if one of the specific number that the state sets up needs to be inspected. As the slide is showing, this one is a little different, maybe how we see it in the future for the other programs. But it's going to be a video inspection. So the installer actually will take video of the installation while they're there, upload it into the database, and we just review that video when or if the inspection gets called for. So that will reduce time. The customers got to be there. I know, especially for mechanical, that's always a tough one, because, you know, the customer's got to schedule for the actual installer, then schedule a separate time for us to come out later. And quite often, you know, they would prefer a time thing, which generally doesn't work into our busy schedule. So this will greatly reduce the amount of time that for customer involvement. And that reduce a fair amount of staff time. Quite often, our mechanical push pull type installations are not ones that we write a lot of corrections for. So this one would be one that would be less of a concern from jurisdictional standpoint. And then the third one is the one that really will need some direction from you guys. The one of the things we're looking at doing, and I kind of said it was a two forked process, is repositioning the permit, the current permit text position. And basically, take what currently is a single tiered approach, we have just a permit tech one, and make it into a tiered process. So we'd have a permit tech one, two, and three, which each position would build on each other. The one would be the introductory, the introduction position. And then the two would get some certifications, just what we refer as the organ OIC. And then the permit tech three position would potentially gets a residential plan review certification. And in the different positions, the staff would do different things with the new permit tech three job classification being more of a plan review, project review coordinator. So that way, we have more of a key permit text that helps manage the plan review for customers. They'll have a specific person that they can go talk to if they have issues with just uploading, if they have issues with the process, similar for staff, and then someone that can help manage those packaging and those other elements where right now it is divided between staff members. So, you know, even if, say, like for myself, if I did a plan review, I was done, but say, planning or Public Works hadn't finished their review yet, I would still have to wait, come back and address it again, once they were done with the review, where we could then have a permit tech finish the processing part of it without actually having to go to certified staff. So and then that permit tech would also be responsible for late plan review. So using that master plan review program that we talked about at the beginning, they may be the one that is responsible for the repackaging of subsequent reviews. Because at that point, from a building code perspective, we're really looking at more how it sits on the property, not the actual building itself. So that one, what will end up being a restructure of the program plus So that one, what will end up being a restructure of the program plus it didn't come through for today's meeting, but there will likely be some discussion about planning. Who currently pays for half of an FTE towards one of the permit texts? There is a good chance that they'll need to reduce that coming up with the budget crisis that they're that you guys are going to be experiencing. So likely we'll be needing to add some FTE to supplement that permit tech position. So that way we retain two full permit texts.
Jonathan, can you at least clarify the difference between the the three job classifications that you're suggesting versus number of FTE?
So basically we'll retain, we currently in the permit tech position have two FTE. We're still wanting to retain two FTE. Hang on, I think I lost my share. Hang on just a minute. All right, guys can still see that. So basically we'll still have two FTE. But long term, we're needing to work with staff to get them evolved to being able to go into different positions. But the ideal arrangement would be we'd have a permit tech two and a permit tech three at any given time. Obviously, like what we have right now, currently a permit tech that just joined us in March. You know, they may only be a one for a little while until they get used to the position and get trained and then can move into the subsequent classifications. The permit tech two would just have additional duties assigned to it, including being more responsible for all the permits that didn't require plan review.
Just to clarify that, make sure it's clear. The Jonathan's proposal is to is to use the same two employees differently, more efficiently in order to expand services, not to to add bodies in order to accomplish that goal. And that doing that would require us to come back to council and and get additional approvals at a at a future meeting.
Yeah, I see. I see. I'm next. Question for whomever can answer it. This is a turning it into three levels. One lower inexpense, one about what we have now, and one higher. What does that do to the budget?
So without doing the class and comp portion of it, it appears from the other jurisdictions that I looked into that had somewhat similar type of a tiered approach, the city of Portland, those sorts of things. There's about a five to eight percent difference between the different tiers. And then so based on the current staff cost, you know, it's going to be, you know, less than probably one percent type increase of the actual cost of the FTE rate. The second, the bigger cost will be if planning can no longer support all or half of an FTE or the 10% is what we're kind of internally talking about for today's discussion. So that works out to, you know, about a $28,000 expense on to our program, which ends up being 2% of revenue.
Yeah, my my concern, of course, is you got a gun to your head and your feet are on fire and you're talking about raising prices, raising costs. And if we don't have to raise costs, we shouldn't be raising costs when we're doing this.
So just just at the current moment, thank you for all of your guys' hard work in the past to get us the reserve that we have. We're not actually proposing to raise costs at any point in time. The current construction overages that we're luckily able to see this year and last year will sustain that additional cost.
So if I could expand on that answer a little bit, just to make sure it's everyone understands the the building division funds are, think of them as enterprise funds, just like the water funds or the sewer funds. They can't be used for general fund purposes. So they're they're not competing against other other resources in the city that you're having to to deal with in other in other ways. There are healthy reserves within the building division budget. And we feel confident that there's a demand here for these changes and that the the budget will continue to support them moving forward. But it is entirely a council decision. But I just want to make sure that that difference between funding restrictions is obvious for everyone.
Yeah, but by the same token, Jeff, we're getting that money from the people who are doing building projects. And when the costs go up, we have to charge more, which, you know, while it's not tax money, it is still funds that people are being denied in order to do something. And it's it is it is more money being spent.
Yeah, that's 100% correct. And we're not proposing any fee increases to go along with this. We don't think it's going to be needed. And you'll probably get different opinions from from different contractors. But we have heard from quite a few that that they would like us to make some changes in order to improve our turnaround times. Several of which have even said they'd be willing to pay more in order to do that. And and we're thinking we can do it through all these measures without having to make them pay more. But I'm not not disputing your point.
Okay, King, I'm up. As a user of the system and also being tied to other jurisdictions, it used to be the fact that you had to have somebody to send in to get a permit. That costs the contractor money because you're paying that individual to come to this, come to the city. So in the cities and the jurisdictions that we work in, that we can do online permitting and that stuff. It's been wonderful. It saves us time and energy and money and all of those things. As far as the minor label permit or permit that is used on, it's used on plumbing, it's used for water heaters. And I see we're moving towards mechanical. I'm all for that. One of the problems that I have is I just found out in the last month or so that if somebody fails to obtain a permit, the fee for that is next to nothing. You just got to go get the permit. So I know that there are contractors, and I don't know if I want to call them contractors because they don't follow the rules. And the rule says you get a permit before you do the job, before you do the work. That's the law. But if they don't do it, they don't get caught. Let's say that's 100 bucks in their pocket that they didn't have to go get a permit. They didn't have to pay for a permit. But that's 100 bucks out of the city's pocket. So if I'm this contractor and I do say, let's just say 100 jobs a year, permits 100 bucks. Do the math, that's about $10,000. So if I don't get caught, but one time, I've only lost 100 bucks. So it's worth to a lot of these people, it's worth the chance of getting caught monetarily because they won't do it. And it costs every one of the contractors money, it costs the city money, it costs the taxpayer money by these individuals that decide that they're not going to get a permit. Now, remember, the reason for permit is not punitive. It does two things. It protects the homeowner and it protects the contractor. It does two things. So I would really like our building department or the officials to seriously consider and bringing before the council a fine and not just some hundred dollar fine. I'm talking 500 to a thousand dollar fine. That if they don't get a permit and they're supposed to and they're doing work, they get hit with a thousand dollar fine and we tie it to the homeowner as well as the contractor. Because also it is, and there's been a lot of educational programs going on by the contractors board, that it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure the permits are obtained. So I'm off my rant now.
Okay, thank you. Mike, thank you for all that you said there because it answered a lot of my questions. You know, as far as like how the, how streamlined the system is. Apparently you find it to work pretty well. Yeah, okay. And so, you know,
Wonderful.
My concern or apparently it's been taken care of is that it doesn't take so much time for the process to go through. Because that's something that I have heard is, you know, I just, now, this is just in the in the in the past. And so I haven't heard anything recently, so it's probably getting better. But I think the streamlining is very good. And Jonathan or Jeff, I don't know which one, did you say that with the with the processes that we're going to like upgrade, that you will be able to help contractors and those getting the permits help with how to obtain them or how to get through the system?
So we already have some of that online right now. It was stuff that was in place previously. We haven't put a huge amount of effort, knowing unfortunately it's been a little too long at this point in life. But knowing that we were going away with it, we were waiting for the new software to come in. So when we go to the new software, we'll have both handouts and educational videos that one people can do. It's a little bit more challenging in the current COVID situation to get people into our office. But quite often what we would do in the past was, hey, come down to City Hall and we'd help you do it here. So we're going to rely a little bit heavier on having links to videos. So that way people can watch them. I know we've done that in the past with some other things. And I know some individuals that literally would do timestamping to say, okay, I need to do this and I need to go look at minute 57 of that video so I can see how to do it. Really, when we do our handouts and research, we try to make sure that we walk the customers through every step to make sure that they can get in and out as quick as possible. We have our permit text a little bit, a little bit more challenging to get a hold of right now since everything's on the phone right now. But they're happy to walk people through how to do that on the phone also.
Great. Yes, music to my ears. And like I said, Mike, I appreciate you. And I know Bill, you used to work in the permitting and everything too. So anything to make it easier so that they can get through it and also take less staff time, I think that is nothing but a positive. Thank you.
Jonathan, I just wanted to share my experience because I've been working on a pretty extensive remodel on my house, which involved inspections for foundation, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, structural. I had some engineered beams. The request process was very easy. It was always followed up with a confirming email. When the inspectors showed up, particularly during this COVID situation, they wore masks and we both distanced, everything was very safe and so forth. And then what I really appreciate was the follow up email the same day telling me that that the inspection was approved. So my personal experience, it was a very smooth process and very professional. So kudos, good job to your team.
Thank you. So Counselor Sykes, we definitely can have a more thorough conversation on the fees. We'll be happy to come back at a different work session and kind of outline what we are allowed to do. We do have some additional challenges that we have to face. Can't remember exact year, somewhere around 2016, Building Code Division made some changes to what we were allowed to do for process. Used to be a very simple, you double fee them and move on. And we do now have two approaches that potentially we can take. One is technically it is a violation of municipal code. So we can go through the citation process. Or we do have already adopted in our current fee table, a investigation fee and which is based on hourly rates. So there are some tools that we can talk to, talk to you guys about options that we have.
I look, I look forward to that. And if we can't, if the construction contractors board doesn't allow us to do a fee, I'm sure the municipal code through council approval can assign a fine to it.
Correct. And you guys, I don't know if it had been adjusted since the 2016. I have to go look at the dates, but there actually already is a civil penalty attached to that in Title 18. It just may need to be revisited to make sure it's not excessive. And that's where BCD landed before on it.
It should be excessive because you don't want them to do it again.
Okay. So I got one more slide. Get this thing working. Okay. So one of the other things that, just briefly, and then we can wrap up my part, that we also do, one of the things that our staff likes to make sure that we do is we want to assist our customers through education and outreach. We don't just want to be the bad guy that's out there in a plan or in a inspection or something like that. So we like to provide that through different things. One of the opportunities is presentations. You'll be seeing a lot more of us at different events, providing those different things. Several of you have ties to trade associations. So those types of elements, we're going to be taking a larger role of doing. Staff just recently, even during the COVID, attended one that a Realtors training lunch that was put on by like local title companies to understand permitting requirements. Those sorts of outreach elements are big for us here in the building division and community development. So we're going to continue doing that. If you visit our website, we restructured how our forms and checklist pages have been put in. And you'll also see now a new section called general building code requirements. And then it has some additional title that goes behind it. So now there's handouts specifically of, I want to put in a restaurant. I want to do these elements. So we'll be continuing to enhance those as we go along. So that way customers know some of the code requirements before they get involved, especially our less code knowledge, people that are trying to start out new businesses and stuff have no idea on a lot of cases what actually needs to be done before they can say have a restaurant. So it's good to get that information out there beforehand to see what some of the hurdles may unfortunately be. And then the other, the final thing we'll end on is also staff and professional development. One of the things that we try to promote is to make sure that our staff stays involved with our other jurisdictions in the state, doing code development, being part of different committees. So that way we stay up on things that are coming and we can share that information to our customers as soon as we can. Like for us right now, unfortunately, we're going to be going through some code changes for the residential stuff, some which won't even go before a board until I think early there. Let's say it's on Thursday, I think it is. And unfortunately, it's implemented on October 1st. So we'll have, you know, we want to get that information out to our customers as soon as possible for code changes and those sorts of things. So that way there's less impact to them. So we like to try to make sure that staff stays well up and well versed in the things that are going to change.
Okay.
And that's it for my stuff.
All right. Questions, counsel, anymore? I do think it'd be good, Jonathan, though, to bring to the council kind of what state law is over what there can be for enforcement and fines. So what you were stating, I had not known that, that there was some limitations on what could be used for fines. So and then and then is counsel okay with revising what was laid out about the permit technician position? Is that okay on the tiered approach?
We would need to come back to a second council meeting. Sorry to interrupt. So I just want to make sure counsel knows that this, they're not providing final direction at this point.
Okay, great. Okay, is that it then, Jonathan?
That is everything. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is Chris on, yep, there's Chris. This is on the Cumberland Church update.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. I'm coming to you from Jeff Babett's office. Anyway, so thanks to Jorge for sharing the slides. We wanted to give you a quick update on the Cumberland Church. And we need to get some input and direction for our next steps. So I'll try to go through this fairly quickly so we can make up some time, hopefully. So this slide just showing sort of the process we're working on. There's multiple steps in what is somewhat, you know, complicated to time everything correctly and get everything done. So the first two things, we already. So the first two things we already, uh, are working on, the, the CCEC has exercised the option for, to purchase the lot and that will be coming to a council meeting soon. Um, because we have to hold a public hearing to sell that first lot on Pine Street where they want to move the building. Um, so that has to come to the council for a public hearing and then it'll be, um, done and we can close on that. So they had until October 1st and they've already signed the option agreement and, um, we're moving forward on that. The next thing we need to work on is the lease for the three remaining lots, which is mostly what we're going to talk about here. And then there's a few other steps before we can get the building up and moved and over and established in this new space. And then finally they'll be off and on their own once we sell the last three lots on Pine Street. So next slide, please Jorge.
Okay. So the next thing that we need to work on is a lease for the three remaining lots on Pine Street. If you'll remember that, um, field that's there now is sort of rectangular shape. It's actually made up of four tax lots. They're buying the one that's on the northeast corner, which that's the option that they've executed. And in order to, uh, get the building, the building will fit on that lot. But of course they need access to some other parts of that field in order to hook up their utilities, make their renovations, do their work, establish some sort of lot that's not going to be a muddy mess, et cetera. So we talked previously with you about, uh, lease for the three remaining lots. Until they have enough, uh, money to purchase them and own that whole property outright. So, um, we, we discussed these things before, but on this slider, a, a list of things that I'd like to go through one at a time and get your direction on. And then at the end, we'll need, um, a motion to direct staff to execute this lease with these conditions. So we'll talk about the ultimate purchase price for the three lots first. The first lot we, um, are selling to them for $69,000. This was based on the assessed value of the, of the land. And we discussed that with counsel, oh, a few months ago. It's approximately one quarter of the total price of, for all four lots. So the remaining would be $207,000 for the remaining three lots. And I'd like to get your input, yea or nay, as to whether that is the appropriate ultimate purchase price? Or if you'd like us to look at something else? So that's the first thing.
Right now you want that question? Okay. I see Rich and-
I'm just giving you a thumbs up.
Okay. I see three thumbs up and Bessie.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Chris, this is Bessie. I just wondered, the one that, the first lot to be sold, what is the tax lot number on that?
Oh, boy. I don't know.
Sorry, this is Kim. That is 502 Pine Street.
Five, 520?
520. That's right. Sorry.
Okay. Nice. So they want to buy that for 69, we're going to sell it for 69,000?
Yeah, that's what we previously just agreed to.
Yeah. I mean, I'm kind of giving these lots away and that bothers me. It really does. Because, uh, the, um, I've looked into some of these things and, um, you know, what they sold for, you know, back in time and stuff. I just don't, I just don't think it's good that we give, give stuff away, you know, it should be real market. But, uh, I'll just wait and see what everybody else says.
Okay. So it looked like a thumbs up for the first question then. Right? Okay.
Oh, Counselor Olson has his hand up, Mayor.
Um, oh, I can't see him on the screen. Dick?
Uh, you're muted, Counselor Olson. I still can't hear you, Counselor Olson. Can you hit your little microphone button?
I can't find him. Oh, there he is. Dick, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Nope.
There you are. Yeah, Bill, do you want to go ahead and start?
Well, I just had a stupid question and just kind of occurred to me and I'm looking on, uh, Google Earth on my other computer at the vacant lot and the houses, houses there and so forth. What's the zoning of, of this area? Or, or I should say, does the zoning permit this use? Uh, be something to move the church and find out the neighbors don't like it and they have a good valid point.
Um, I don't know, Kim, if, I think you looked into this, but it does, it's the neighborhood commercial or what's the name of that zone?
Yes, uh, it does. Zoning does permit this type of activity there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Dick, you got your mic on?
Yes. Uh, can you tell me how much we, the city sometime in the distant past paid for those lots when the city acquired them?
It's free.
Yeah. So Kim, uh, could have talked this more, but they, uh, they were, um, given to the city that those four lots.
Well, that's my understanding also. Yes.
Okay. All right. I think you had the thumbs up for that first question then, um, Chris.
Thank you. All right. So next one is, um, oh, go back. Could you go, there you go. Um, next question is the monthly lease amount. So previously when we talked with the council conceptually about this process, I think there were a couple of people who suggested a nominal lease, you know, a dollar a month or something like that. So that the money that the group raised could be saved and used for the purpose of, you know, moving, restoring the church, purchasing what they need to purchase. So we need to know, uh, lease amount that you would like us to put into this lot, this agreement for these three lots. And if you, um, a related question is if it is going to be a substantial amount, should it go towards the purchase price? Or, um, be separate from the purchase price?
I would think whatever the lease amount would be, go towards the purchase price. It's kind of like they're just financing the sale of the lots that way. Um, so counsel, Rich?
Yeah. If you're going to make it a nominal lease, they just pay the nominal lease. And if it's a dollar or $10 or whatever a month, I mean, um, doing the paperwork to take it off is going to cost more than that. Um, and I mean, we're talking about making it a nominal number. So to make it easy. Uh, so I don't think it should come off. And I think it ought to be like a dollar a lot.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Alex?
I'm, I'm agreeing with Rich.
Okay. Anyone else? Looks like Mike said yes. Dick, everyone's okay with the dollar?
Looks like Counselor Coburn wants to talk.
Yeah, I mean, Bill?
I, I, I don't think I have a problem with that. I'd, I'd like to hear from Sean, just if he sees any problems, uh, with that.
Sean?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I don't see a problem with putting a nominal amount on and then not applying it. You know, like Richard was saying, it's a pay, it'd be a pain to, if they're going to pay a dollar a, a month or a dollar a year to apply a $10 or a hundred dollar fee or whatever that number is at the end towards the purchase price. The one thing that I would like to see in this agreement, uh, don't see on this list, but I have put it in the draft that I've already sent over to Kim and Chris. And that is, I didn't want to do this lease option until the church was moved. But the church, um, was pretty insistent that they wanted to have all the pizzas in place. Because of that, I've inserted a clause into the lease, this lease option that we're looking at now that gives the city the right, but not the obligation to buy back the first lot that they're buying from us for the purchase price of $69,000 in the event that they don't move that church. Um, so that, that doesn't tie up our property. Right now, the concern is that we, we lease them the prop, or we sell the one lot for $69,000, then we execute this lease and they have a 10-year lease for a dollar a month and they don't move the church. We're kind of stuck. Um, and so I want to make sure we can get our property back in the event that doesn't happen. I don't anticipate that happening, but just to protect the city, I think that we ought to have the right to get that property back in the event that the deal falls through and they can't move the church.
I agree with that. Looks like thumbs up. Or Rich, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I agree with that. I also would think that they would, they would be responsible for ensuring whatever liability there. So we don't, um, hold on to the liability while we're giving them the right to run around with heavy equipment and so forth.
Yeah, that's a standard clause. We always require insurance.
Okay, Bill?
Um, so there's maybe some standard requirements that, that we're not aware of and, you know, drilling down into the weeds, but some simple things like mowing the grass and maintaining the property, uh, when they're leasing it. Uh, are those types of things covered?
Mowing the grass on the commercial lease, I don't have, I don't, I don't believe that's in there, Bill. But they have the obligation to do that under our city code because they're in possession of the property. So just like if they were renting that property out, they would be in, have possession of it. Um, if they were rent, a, a person renting a house has the obligation to maintain their property the same way. So if the weeds and the grass got too tall, then we'd send Chris or someone out there with code enforcement to give them a notice that it needs to be cut and they'd be responsible for that.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to having that addressed. I mean, we're all going into this a good faith and sell it or release it for a dollar a month or a dollar a year. I don't want it to become a pain in the side of the council that we've got to hound these people to, to take care of the property. You know, even just keeping that mode is, uh, pretty good project in and of itself.
Yeah. And then, and put that as a, one of the, the obligations that can result in, you know, over time in a default of their lease. And then we can terminate their lease in the event they're not doing that. So.
So, um, and actually they've been doing all the mowing on the existing church now for way over a year. But, um, Bessie?
Yeah, I see it. I mean, this is a, a lease that could be for 10 years. And so they can just put off for 10 years, just using it and not buying it. Is that, uh, what I'm seeing?
I mean, that's a thing to guess. Yep. Good segue. So, yeah, and this was what we have discussed with the CCEC and, uh, I, you know, except for the council's discussion, I think I started at five years and then I think we went to 10 years. So, um, feel free to tell us what you would like.
Okay. I'll, I'll say this, just from a business standpoint. The 10 years, when we talked about the five or 10 years before, at least when I was talking about that, um, I wasn't, that was before we were talking about a nominal dollar or what a $10, a dollar a month fee. I would say now that if we're going to lease that property for that amount of money and they have up to a 10-year lease, I don't know why they would buy the property. Why, I mean, what's their incentive to buy it and not just lease it for the dollar or $10 and for that 10-year period? Um, but again, that's-
Yeah, but it's got a bad static on there.
So Sean, in that case, would it be better to lease it for at least a fair amount so that they have an incentive to buy? I mean, uh, heck, yeah, I'd, I'd pay a dollar a month for five, 10 years and do what I want with it, you know? So, uh, what is your thought on that?
Well, it's, I guess you look at it two different ways. One is, yeah, I would like to see us get more money out of that, of those three lots. But, um, at the same time, I understand that if they're spending all of their money on rent, then they may not have the money then to do the improvement of the church that they're, they're trying to. So in that regard, then maybe if they can't pay, you know, uh, a fair market value for the rent. And I think Kim actually may have come up with a number that was a fair market amount for the rent. Kim, is that right? Or did I just dream that?
I did, based on, um, the only comparable that I could find in Lebanon. And it was, I believe, like $1,500 a month.
Yeah, it was high. It was, it was probably-
That's really high.
Yeah, that was probably too high for what they could afford it. But, and I, and I don't think they can do that. But at the same time, the dollar is, is a whole different story. But if we were going to do that, then I think, Bessie, we ought to maybe have a less of a, a term on there, maybe a, a three or four-year term. Something that gives them a chance to get their feet up underneath them and, and save some money. And then they can decide if they want to buy the property. And then if they don't, and they want to continue leasing it, then the city could have the option at that point to get fair market value for those lots.
I have a solution.
I think that would be fair. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, Rich? Bottom line, you want to fix that, what you do is you tell them they can't use anything they put on there until they have agreed to purchase the property. I mean, you know, they can, they can put a, a real nice parking lot there, but they can't use it. Can't use it for parking. Uh, they can't open the facility um, and use the facility without, without purchasing the property. That way they're not going to keep it for any length of time because they want to get that thing open and running. It would be unreasonable for them to not purchase the property beforehand or, or after that time. Cause they, they can't use the property. They're, you know, they're not being able to have any income. So I think that's the way around it.
Chris?
Um,
You needed more on account of what they would like on that lease, that term of lease?
Um, they, Joel Orton has suggested 10 years. I think that it is their intention to purchase it sooner than, if they can. But considering they've got to come up with $200,000 for the land and the remodeling and, uh, work on the church is probably another 200 to $300,000. I think that they're just concerned they can't come up with $500,000 in five years. So they were looking for a little bit longer time with the option to purchase it sooner.
So, um, so what about the term of the lease to be a three-year? And then it's to be the council, um, would have to come back, council up to a 10-year lease. Basically you have to come back and get it renewed for up to 10. It could be future councils might say no then. So it'd be, I think it'd give the motivation to get it paid for. And I do know that's what their goal is, is to just get it all paid for.
I think if we can, if we can legally structure it like that, that might be a nice compromise. Because then it, you know, the, it'll be a, a set date for checking with the council on progress on this project, which is, we also has taken a lifetime, it feels like, um, so far. So if, if counsel is supportive of that and Sean says we can do it, then I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah, we would just make it a three-year lease. Definitely. I mean, if, if it's a three-year lease, then at, at the end of three years, we, we come back and the council can, then whoever's on council then can decide to extend that lease or, or not. Or get, you know, have a, they, we could say this, the option is still there within the three years. Um, and then we can come back and visit it, it, you know, after three years and see if they want to buy it then. Or do they want to continue? And the council may say, yeah, keep doing it for a dollar. Or they may say, we want free, with fair market value at that point.
Okay. Is that okay, counsel? I see Mike's up. Give a thumbs up. All right. Um, I don't see Dick. Did we lose Dick?
He just walked off.
I see his little room.
There he is.
That a thumb, Dick?
Oh, man.
Must be. All right. Okay.
Okay. Next, um, item, and we sort of already touched on this. Um, we talked about the credit of lease payments. And so my understanding is if it's a- And so my understanding is if it's a minimal lease, we're not going to be doing any credit. We'll just, we'll donate that to the Parks Fund and a dollar a month. And then, um, the next would be the right to make improvements on the leased property. And this, I think, is pretty critical. They need to make improvements in order to get equipment in and work on the building and start getting it up to speed. So just want to clarify and make sure everyone's okay that there'll be doing work on those lots while they don't own them. Okay? And, um, and then the last thing is remedies for defaults, and I'll leave Sean to talk about this. So if the, the whole thing falls apart within the first three-year timeframe, um, that gets back to his clause about we have the right to purchase that other lot back. Are there other things, Sean, that you think should be in there?
No, I mean, if they're in default of the lease option by, it, by, the only thing really they could be doing is not keeping the property up or not paying the, the dollar, which neither one of those, I think, are extreme risk or if they fail to maintain insurance or something like that. And then the remedies would be on that is we just terminate the lease. The lease is null and we, we terminate, we take possession of that property. The option for us to buy the, the original lot back is not tied to this, not really tied necessarily to this lease being in default, but it's tied to them moving the church by a certain date. And I thought that date was sometime middle of 2021. Is that right, Chris? I want to say even maybe early.
Well, yeah, it's spring. I think their goal is in April, but, um.
And we'd give them a little, I mean, in that, if I were writing this up, I would give them a little extra time of, of a grace period to say, if it's, you know, give them through, and I'm making this up. We're, we're almost October. I'd say October 1st of 2021. If they don't have the church moved by then, which is at least six, seven months behind when they say they're going to, then the city could, if they want, buy that property back for the $69,000. Um, they don't have to, but they have the option to. So, and that would be a council decision.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Chris? You wanted a motion, right, to direct staff?
And there's one more slide. I think Jorge, can you?
Okay.
So, yeah, so this gets to what Sean was talking about, the timing, just to further update you. Um, the sale, the first lot should go after we have the council meeting with the public hearing. Then we can work on this lease and get that done. Their goal is to set, to, um, buy the church building and move it next spring. And then we would sell them, this says October 1st, 2030, but I'll change that since you've got the three-year, uh, is what you put on the, the lease agreement, and we'll just see what that date works out to be.
Okay.
Okay. So yes, Mayor, I need a motion for, uh, essentially to direct staff to enter into a lease for the three remaining lots on Pine Street, which I don't have the addresses of, but I should have. For a total of $207,000, the monthly lease amount would be $1 per lot per month. Term of the lease would be three years. And they would have the right to make improvements. Um, and of course, we would do our standard things like require insurance and require they maintain the property. I think I got it.
So moved.
All right, there was a so moved, but I missed it.
Second. It was right here.
Counselor Kellam, or Sykes?
The rich made it and then Sykes. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Bessie?
Did that, uh, motion cover, uh, Rich's point about them not being able to use it?
No.
No?
No, with, with three years, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay. All right.
It's, we're not going to have a problem with it because, you know, they're, they're trying to get this thing done. Only if, you know, aliens come down and abduct somebody, we're going to have to worry about it, so.
Yeah, don't give 2020 any ideas.
That's true. All right.
Don't even, don't even go there.
You have any other motion? So, okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right. Motion carried, six oh. And is that it, Chris?
That is. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. Um, next item is utility fee framework work. And Peter, you're somewhere here on the screen. Yep.
I'm right here. I have not been abducted by aliens yet. All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Uh, you have the memo in your packet that I put together with the help of, uh, our team here. And I would, uh, try to make this fairly brief. We are, we're being sorely tested in 2020 with a host of problems. No, no aliens yet, but, um, lots of other things. And, uh, but we have to, despite that, we have to keep looking forward. And we'll soon be putting together budget assumptions in preparation for the next biennium, which will start uh, July 1st of next year. Now you, we have been talking about this, you know, the eight of us for a long time. And we've been going over revenue enhancements and cost containment measures. And we've been talking about, uh, at the League of Oregon Cities level, uh, one of their initiatives is property tax reform. But property tax reform is unlikely. Uh, and yet the cost of providing services is going to continue to go up at a rate faster than revenues are going up. At the same time, people all over Oregon and certainly here in Albany are under, under financial pressure or under psychological pressure. They're under quite a bit of stress. Nevertheless, if you, if we don't, uh, do something along the lines of create this, this framework for a utility uh, within the next eight months, then we, we're going to have to make substantial reductions in the next biennium, as I talked to you about, about six, six weeks ago or so. If we, if we don't do it within the next biennium, then we'll be back in the same position two and a half years from now, making more service level reductions. So what we, what we're doing with this, uh, project is basically building a car for you. We'll put together the chassis, the tires, the transmission, the drivetrain, the engine. We need to get that vehicle into your garage as soon as we can. So that when you do eventually decide to put the key in, turn it on and operate the vehicle, you can do that. As you all know, as we all know, it takes time to order up a vehicle. So we're beginning that work now. And that's what we'll embark upon with, uh, with Deb Gollardi, our, our consultant whom we've used in the past. Uh, and checking in with you, uh, every step of the way as you, you know, order up the size of the engine. Any other parameters on, on this vehicle that, uh, will be necessary for us to have. So that's, uh, the best I can do for an analogy. But I'll happy to answer any questions you have and certainly take any direction you have with respect to, uh, starting on this, on this path. So any, any questions for me?
Questions? Any, any thoughts? Bessie?
Peter, when, when are you planning, um, I was reading the memo and stuff, and when are you kind of, if we give the okay, when would you start, oh, with November? No, that was last year, November 19th. So would you bring it back within a month or two or for the next budget season?
Oh, well, we, we would be checking in with you regularly and, and as the next step after this, after tonight, would be to get the team together here at the, at the city level, uh, lay out a, a timeframe, uh,
Okay.
action and milestones, then engage our consultant. Then get it back to you with, with whatever the first, uh, first level decision that's needed and, um, work onward. This, this would, I imagine this would take about eight months or so. Uh, but again, there's not anything that would, uh, you are not committing to anything by doing this. I'm just trying to get this ready for you should you decide that you want to make use of it. Eventually, the way I see it is you will be making use of it at some point in the future. And that's why an increasingly large number of cities are turning to this mechanism. So it'll be there and waiting and available for you.
Well, I think anything to assist us on this difficult task, um, I'm for it. I think, uh, you know, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Alex?
So Peter, are you going to be bringing back more than, more than one option or give us, give us a couple of options to look at?
Yeah, if you recall, um, in late last year.
Yeah, planes, yeah, presentation.
Right. And so we, we, we've looked hard at that and there are some things that, that fit for us. Um, we won't commit to that until we get your blessing on it. But, uh, but a utility fee of, 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 uh, for a great neighborhoods type utility fee is, is where, where it will inevitably have to go. If you're, there are plenty of options within that. That would be the subject of check-ins with you along the way.
Okay, thank you. Rich?
Yeah, just reminding, there are a number of us that think that this should go to the people. Um, and the timeline necessary to do that, um, I don't know when you'd be looking at having an election, if that's the way that it decided, you, you, it was decided to go. Just so that the work was done prior, so we would have that option.
Okay. Any more comments? So Mike, your head's kind of gotten out of the screen. I can only see part of you. Okay. There. Okay. So do you want to, Peter, do you want a motion to provide direct?
No, I don't think, uh, we, we need that just yet. I see that you all have, uh, are, are looking kind of glum, but you're looking like you understand why we need to go down this road and prepare this, uh, for your eventual use. So.
I think, excuse me, Peter, I think Mike has his hand up, Mayor.
I think he put a thumbs up.
No, I was just giving him a thumbs up.
Yeah. Yeah, so is Bessie. So does council, Peter, to proceed? Okay?
Okay.
I see Bill, thumbs up or dick? Yep. Okay. Looks like you got it.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Council.
Is that it? Thank you. Uh, next would be the Lafayette Street, Madison Street Vacations. And Ron, is Ron on?
So, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, uh, so Matthew Rikers, I've Development Services Manager. I'm stepping in for Ron because, uh, as he was logging on tonight, his, his computer decided to go into a Windows update. So, uh, he's not really available.
Took about an hour.
But, but, but not, not a big deal. I've been working with Ron on this one. So tonight we bring to you, there's a, we, we've, over the years, this has actually been considered a couple of times or talked about at least at the staff level over, uh, off of Lafayette and Madison, near the Sunrise Elementary, Sunrise Park area. Uh, with the plats that had gone in there, uh, many, many years ago, there were these pedestrian accessways that were created. Um, as you see on the screen, uh, highlighted in red and in blue, there's two, two different types there. These are, uh, about a, a six-foot wide pathway, asphalt pathway that just connect the street into other areas was the intent because you've got some pretty long block lengths there. Now, the, we've been approached by, uh, members of the neighborhoods over the, the years and, and again, and that's kind of what brings staff forward, um, to, to, to basically vacate these uh, small, narrow right-of-ways that are for pedestrian access. Um, so we, we've kind of pulled this together to, to bring it to you guys tonight for consideration of, uh, initiating a, a city, well, a city-initiated vacation of these. So I, I'll talk through the, 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 the two specific types. So basically off of Lafayette, there, there are multiple accessways through there. There's only two that we're posing to get rid of. One, um, farther to the south, uh, actually accesses, uh, Sunrise Park and is currently open and being used. Where the other two to the northern end, where you see highlighted in red and I've attached some photos there that, that kind of show what they look like today, the, the pathway is there. Um, it is however gated and locked on the school district side. Uh, we have talked to the school district, um, and they, they don't, as, as Russ put it over there was they, they have no, uh, no, it does, they're not anticipating in any foreseeable future to ever have those gates unlocked because it provides a, a control, uh, access control issue for the school district. So they're not, currently if somebody walks down that pathway, it dead ends, they, they don't, they have to turn around and go back out. Uh, and it tends to lead to, uh, obviously, we still have to maintain them. Uh, and it can lead to some nefarious activities, which I'm sure the neighborhood, um, can definitely reiterate some of that. The, the other two that we're looking at, highlighted in blue on this map, um, again, same, same style with the very narrow right-of-way uh, design for pedestrian access, only about asphalt pathway, about six feet wide. I think the right-of-way is about 10 feet wide there. Um, those had, while the right-of-ways were created, the pathways were never installed, so never actually improved at all. Um, as you can see, pictures are really small, but, uh, one, there's a tree smack dab in the middle of where the path would go. Uh, the other one is, uh, basically somebody's basically improved side yards. They were never actually, um, never actually did anything with them. You know, we, in, in the process of researching this, like, say, we reached out to the school district, uh, asked them if they had any issue with closing the ones off of Lafayette. There really isn't anybody to talk to other than the neighborhood. For the ones off of Madison because they connect to either in the back of an apartment complex or the back of a single-family residential lot. Uh, we did also talk to P D, um, a, about these and if they had any concerns, um, they were supportive of, of uh, vacating them because obviously they, they get calls for service out to these, uh, the ones that are open or, or actually improved. Um, but dead-ended, uh, quite often. Uh, we did, been working with, uh, former Planning Commissioner, uh, Daniel Sullivan, who lives in the neighborhood. Um, who actually, uh, is, is on tonight and went around and, and talked to neighbors and, and gathered signatures in support um, the, the city vacating these. So the, the question, I don't know, before, uh, you folks tonight is, is it something the city is interested in, in initiating a, a vacation of these? And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have or anything like that.
So, um, so, yeah, Matthew, um, and I actually did talk to Daniel Sullivan earlier today about this. So, you know, kind of in this, you know, late, you know, 60s, 70s, um, this whole section of Albany, the middle section in between, um, say more Marion towards, um, Waverly, um, had a lot of these little connections, pedestrian connections. And the goal to them was to connect them to the school. So my neighborhood has one that goes from Marion all the way over to Oak School. And it was to try to have walkable neighborhoods and be able to try to, you know, get kids to be walking to school. Um, so then what happened in my neighborhood, then they switched the neighborhood to go to Lafayette School. Then you got the busiest street on, you know, a 34th for kids to cross, then they end up busing the kids. So the pedestrian access isn't used as much. So seeing this, what you have identified, where you basically have a, a dead, um, you know, a gated off area where the school district doesn't want access. And the other two that were never approved, I think this is something that we should proceed for vacation. And a question would be the vacation that is divided in the middle and half goes to one property owner and half the other, correct?
Correct. In a, in a standard, the way these were plotted, they would get split down the middle and one would go to, to each side of the adjoining property.
Uh-huh. Great. Yeah. I think it, yeah, I think it'd be great, but I'm glad you're keeping the access open to Sunrise Park from the neighborhood too. So. Richard and Bill?
In your, it, I guess to, to Matthew and Daniel, when you were talking to people, did any of them jump up and scream and, oh my God, no, 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 no? Or was it basically, oh gee, have, you haven't done that already, kind of an attitude?
Um, quite the opposite, uh, Mr. Kellam. They, they were jumping up and down that, uh, that we might actually be able to get them vacated because the property owners have been doing the, uh, maintenance and stewardship of those walkways for a long time. And, uh, so we, we, um, I think, and I provided to, uh, Matthew the, uh, all the signatures from the neighbors, that we didn't have anyone dissenting.
Okay.
Of the people that we talked to, so.
All right.
And Counselor Kellam, I will, we'll jump in there. And the, a couple of people that I have talked to out there, um, most of them were. I have talked to out there, um, most of them were complaints about, about the paths themselves. The only one that I, I heard was when they. That they had, there was concern that they were gonna, that we were gonna try to close the, the interconnect between Lafayette and Madison, which is not the case, because there's quite a few people that use those to get from one, one neighborhood to the other.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Bill, and then Bessie?
Uh, question for Sean. The, uh, the vacated property have to be split evenly between the two adjacent property owners?
It doesn't have to be, but it will be. I mean, it, it, the, the law is that they will do that. Now, if another owner wants to, you know, negotiate that or, or take title to it, I guess they could, they could work that out. But for our standpoint, we would normally just split it and, and let them deal with it themselves. So that's out, so, yeah.
Well, I guess my suggestion is that maybe there's possibility for the city to, uh, work with the owner property a little bit and not just split it 50-50. Uh, good, good example, I just, again, on my other computer, I'm looking on Google Earth, and it, uh, one of these paths is between 2120 Lafayette and 2140 Lafayette, and the not equal distance between the houses. I mean, the path is in three feet of one house, 10 feet from the other, so, uh, rather than just splitting it in the middle. Now, maybe that's the procedure, and you just let the neighbors fight it out, but, uh, I.
That's certainly worth looking. Yeah, we can look at it. I can look at it with, with Matthew and them, um, but that would be the normal procedure is this.
I can provide some response on that. So state law with, you know, if they were plotted on one plat, state law dictates that we split those down the middle, and they revert back to the each adjoiner on either side. Now, that, as, as Sean pointed out, or Bill, even the, um, that doesn't prevent the, the private property owners from later on going through a separate land use process with the city and doing a lot line adjustment, adjusting that line over to one side or the other.
Uh-huh.
All right, thank you.
Bessie?
Yeah, I was, when the pictures were up, I saw, uh, you said Russ Allen, uh, was, said that those, uh, fences gates would never be open, but my concern is, is if you, if you vacate them, will they be open? I'm thinking of the safety of the school. I mean, if there's already activity there, that's, you know, not good. Uh, I just wondered, is it gonna stay the same gated and then just go ahead and do the vacation? That type of a thing? Is that what Russ said that they'd like?
I, I, not, not to put words in Russ's mouth, but the, you know, hey, it, they, the school district closed those off because they were concerned about people accessing into the backside of the school there.
Exactly.
Right, they're gated off. They would remain gated, that's the school's gates, the school's locks. Um, property owners, as, and Daniel could attest to this, uh, especially in the ones off of Lafayette, have a, an interest in, um, probably, uh, whether they get rid of the pathway, but basically, but taking that property for them, whether it be to the middle or they come to some other agreement there. Um, I, I don't think we have to worry about them. A worst-case scenario, they would just stay the way that they are right now, just, they're no longer a rightaway. Um, so now PD would, if there was a problem, PD's still called out to the same place. Chances are with private properties or private, private property owners now controlling them, uh, you're probably not gonna have as much of those activities, uh, going on, so.
Right. If they have ownership in it, they're gonna take care of it and probably, uh, monitor it more anyway. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is the council, um, okay on, um, directing staff to proceed with the vacation process? That has to go through, like, the planning, back to the council?
Good.
All right? You okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Like you got her. Yep, thank you, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for that item, and, um, and business from the council, um, top the screen, Alex? Do you have anything?
I've got nothing, nothing today.
Okay, Bessie?
I just want to say tomorrow I find out if I get rid of my fancy boot or not, and if I have to have surgery, and I just hope it's just getting rid of the boot. And I'm just, I'm, I'm really tired of it already. So that's all I have.
Yeah, good luck. Rich, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just, uh, Bessie, you could just be nice, because he could give you another boot.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. Maybe a little smaller one would be good. Thanks, Rich.
Okay, Bill? Nope, Mike?
Yes.
Okay?
Everybody knows that I own a company. And this is going back to the incompetent leadership we have at the state level. I got a letter from the unemployment department last week that said that I had filed for unemployment, that, uh, they were processing the paperwork because I was laid off from my company due to lack of work. And then when you try to get a hold of these honyaks, you can't get a hold of them. And then going through some research, I found out another business owner in Albany also got a letter that he was laid off from his company due to lack of work. I find it interesting that there's people, we, we, business owners pay unemployment insurance, and the state is supposed to administer it, but they can't even do that right when they send me an, uh, a, a, a letter that said, "I'm gonna get unemployment" because there was lack of work in the company that I own, even though I do employ a little over 35 individuals. That is my rant for today. I don't get it.
Oh, I agree, Rich, because they, uh, uh, Mike, because they had that money years ago, it should have been updated and done. It's, it's just, it is just asinine.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
It's after 10.
No, I just, then you can't, you can't get through them. Shelley Bossard-Davis has got the information now, and she's got it from the other individual. She's gonna go, go after it, but you can't even get through to them on a phone call, so they can't pay people that deserve unemployment, but they're sending it to people that didn't even apply.
Okay, all right. Um, Dick, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I just want to comment that the, those, uh, pedestrian paths are the work of the devil. And if there's any planners listening, please don't burden us with any more of those paths that can't also accommodate, um, vehicle traffic, because they're just a, an invitation for mischief and, uh, unfortunate stuff. There should have been streets through those extremely long blocks, at least two of them. So that's, that's my complaint. And I'm, I'm glad to see we're gonna close those, um, those pass-throughs in the, in those extremely long blocks, much as it's, and it, uh, terrible for the pedestrians, but they, they need to be closed. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. I mean, they actually do work well in my neighborhood, because they're a little bit actually wider of a path than, um, some, but they are very nice and convenient, so.
Well, I'm glad that you don't have, um, kids monkeying around in them and causing problems.
Yeah, they're, the one end has had problems in the past over the years, so I can't say that there hasn't been, but, um, but the one property owner they found towards Oak School ended up finding out his rightaway went over, and he shut it down. And boy, I tell you, had a whole bunch of people in the neighborhood upset because they were sending their kids to school that way and couldn't, you know, longer. Oh, but, yeah. Um, okay, um, is that it, Dick?
Yeah.
And I didn't have anything. And Peter?
Mayor, I have nothing further to add either.
Okay, does staff have anything else they need to bring out? Okay, um, with not, if, with that, then we just have our Wednesday council meeting, and with that, we're adjourned right at 6:00.